At this time, we'll call the meeting to order.
Where's Ms. Ms. Quartzville?
Barlow.
She's at training.
That's reason I don't want to be, I don't want to be at training.
Row call.
Row call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Regarding the adoption, we will not have the recognition of Ms. Audra Roberts this evening. Of course, that's not an action item, but remember her and her family in prayer. Her mother has passed away, so she will not be here, but we'll recognize her at next board meeting. So I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
I'm going to shake the bathroom, you know, I'm going to hurry.
Next item is public comments. Does anybody want to make a public comment this time?
I don't think you're ready yet.
If not, we'll move on. Okay.
Continue. Right.
Next item then will be consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report. Ms. Carnes is at SASBO. Russell County Board of Education treasurer's monthly report, month of March 2024. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month, sixteen million, eight hundred, seven thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Total of all receipts for the month, three million, two hundred, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred, forty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total of all receipts and beginning balance, twenty million, eighty-three thousand, thirty dollars and seventeen cents. Disbursements for the month, three million, five hundred, fifty-seven thousand, forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Balance at the close of the month, cash in bank, sixteen million, five hundred, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred, eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Fund One, general fund, ten million, three hundred, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred, fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Special projects, Fund Two, six hundred, thirty-two thousand, one dollar and twelve cents. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, one hundred, ninety-four thousand, negative, one hundred, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred, twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Capital outlay, Fund Three-Tim, one hundred, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, fifty dollars. FSPK Building Fund, Three-Twenty, one million, five hundred, two thousand, seven hundred, fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Construction Fund, Three-Sixty, three million, two hundred, eighteen thousand, one hundred, fifty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, Zero. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, eight hundred, fifty-five thousand, four hundred, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, three thousand, one hundred, twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And total cash in bank of all funds, sixteen million, five hundred, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred, eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. There are no questions or changes or amendments. I recommend the approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve. Continue.
Need a second.
I'll second it.
Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Found it, yes.
Vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is renovation project updates.
I want to give everybody just a quick update on a couple of projects. Start first with the science rooms at the high school. All plumbing and electricals, they're in there, everything's been inspected. They are actually starting today, insulating all the copper water lines that should be done by tomorrow. Drywall's delivered this week. They're going to start painting drywall Thursday, and we should be painting starting Monday. As you can see, all the wood blockings and all the case work. We'll get all the drywall hung, start painting, and then we'll be ready to start prepping for the flooring. Everything, the blood slab is done, ready for flooring, all of those rooms. Of course, this one, all the case works already ready, so as soon as we get the flooring done, then we're ready to start installing case work, so we don't have to wait on the case work, like we did the first whole room. So this is all ready, and they should jump in, get it installed.
That's the freshman?
This is the freshman off the other two classrooms.
The other four are done, and they're just loving every minute of it.
They're just.
They're just so tickled.
Unrehearsed, and it's very good.
And we're shooting right now to be able to redo these at the end of May.
How soon?
Prior to end of May. More weekend will be done.
Ahead of schedule.
Ready to punch. Should be out of there. It may be sooner than that. If we get the flooring in, get it waxed, and get the case work in, it'll be, it may be ready prior to that, but definitely end of May we'll be out of there, supposedly done. Old ATC.
That orange bunch are dead from last night.
This is looking at the restrooms there. All that blockwork's done, you can see the door frames going in, starting, getting everything filled in, all the fill-ins, blockwork, where we had all the door openings, that's all being completed. This is gifted and talented room. That drywall's hung, it's finished. The frames are getting set on all these areas as they're coming in, we're getting those done. I'll show you, man, it's actually already started painting in some of the rooms, I'll show you. But that works, it's progressive, pretty nice, nice classrooms. This is the, what's the cheer room?
That's not the painting he was referring to.
No, that's left over.
That's the original.
That's the damn business.
I don't know.
One of the rooms, you can tell it's had like seven, eight different colors on different pieces.
The wall thickness is actually thicker.
Yeah.
This is the new wall, the dressing room for cheerleaders, and I'll show you here, we actually reused.
Wait, wait, go back to that one, I've got to point out something. Somebody said, what's that desk sitting up top there? And Keith Kern said, that's for Teresa Ellis. She comes in and checks on it. She's really pleased. She's really pleased.
This is the dressing room, we've actually reused the lockers that were there, we salvaged those, put those back up, so it didn't have any expansion lockers. Obviously, you can see that drywall's finished, we're about ready for painting in those areas.
You see the frames that are giant.
That's why cheerleaders change every sudden the cheer room. This is actually all the cheer room. You can see where we filled in those old windows and doors, that drywall work's done, it's been finished. You see they're starting to paint some of the structure. And of course, the areas up here that you see, it's brown, it's not painted, these will all get covered with white vinyl insulation, so all of this will disappear, and it'll look like new ceiling up there. The only thing you'll see will be these main structures right here that will be painted white. Of course, this will be painted all the way down, but you can see this will all, it'll look like new ceiling.
Yeah, oh yeah. So much better.
She's tickled, she comes by.
This is the alternative classroom. You can see that all that fill-in work is done, pretty much all the demo's done, there are already a lot of duck work, roughing electric's being done. There's some, actual, some office space that gets built over here around these windows that's not been done yet, but we're getting all the big stuff done. You can see where they've started studs on the wall here, but that'll, there's actually, there's two offices there.
There is.
There's actually two offices that'll be built there that's split between these windows. So we're getting ready to frame those in. We're just trying to get all the overhead stuff done, and then we'll dig up the room and try and keep them. This is the junior ROTC room. This, this is one of that bigger room on the end that actually got divided. This is the new wall constructed. This is one half of it, there's another side of this up there that's, that's big and plate too. As you can see, a lot of the new duck work is going in, overhead electrical roughing, and obviously drywall's getting finished in that room, it's going to work out.
Oh, would they be really good.
This is the Roper Range Junior ROTC. Same thing you see there, the structure is painted. All of this old brown will go away when we cover this with that white vinyl insulation. This wall will look like new ceiling up here, it'll be bright white. They get all those LED lights in, it'll look a lot better once it's applied, but this was the old welding lab where all these old holes in the wall, we filled all those in, plow was going in, of course, this will all be painted. We're getting a lot of that roughing work done in these rooms now. This is exterior of the building, you can see where some of the old windows, overhead doors, have been taken out, they've been demoed out, we're going back and shooting over this. As you can see, they're starting to frame some of the structure under here, because this will all get new metal. These panels get covered with metal that will match the same profile that go right over it, and then there will be metal down below this, so that will have a nice clean look to the building once we're complete. This is just another shot of the back of the building, more around this side, you can see where that old block was. It's all been demoed out, cleaned up, the framing's going on, and again, this metal panel that wore over this and covered this all the way down to this part out here. We're actually leaving this up a little bit, we've decided to leave it up a little bit, you're going to see some of this old block, but in the thoughts later on, y'all decide to do some paving, that'd be able to pave right up to this, and it'll look a nice, fun finish. That way, they're not paving right up against metal.
What color is that going to be, the one?
We picked gray, I think, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Kind of a, I don't remember that actual name, it's gray.
But that whole surface area there of the asphalt, the blacktop back there, we'll have to, of course, we have extra built into this project anyways, barring nothing significant happens, that we should have enough to do that, but it's going to need paving back there to, to finish up the project.
A lot of this paving's cracked and it's settled places, especially out there here in the.
But I'm glad they thought of that, so it wouldn't be pushing up against it, it would come flush with it when they paved that.
And you'll have a nice straight edge across there.
Yes.
We didn't actually follow the grade, we kept it straight all the way across there, then we build up paving, and have a nice.
Where is that corner right there?
Right at the very end back.
That's the end back of the building, that's old welding lab.
Okay. And there, if you're right here, you're looking back at the middle school.
This is the front of that building, you can see we're getting brick ties on here, getting ready for brick. Gas company's going to be here, I think, this week, they're going to move the gas riser, because it's going to be moved out to where we're going to add brick on this wall. You can see we're starting to take off all these metal panels. The roofing contractor that did all the roof work is actually going to be on site Thursday when we have a progress meeting, he's going to take the dance bouts off, see about taking the gutter off, where we can start brick. You can see all the filler work's done, we'll be ready to start brick up on the face of this building. It's got, it'll have insulation that'll be put on here straight on to give it a better insulation layer, and the brick will come up right off the outside of that. It'll be bricked all the way up.
And we've talked about this area right here that is so, well, you can see the mud there, and it butts up to the back of what is currently the NGLTC building. We need something, we're toying around with some options to fix that through there, because you can't really mow it, and there's not enough to mow it, and it may be that we reduce the grade some and bring a proposal to you all to concrete it through there, but, yeah.
And it will help with.
Get the water out.
Help, that's what, it'll help with runoff, of course, you know, we installed a storm down through here, but it will still help. We could grade this down, concrete this, and then let it water dry plus the maintenance issue. And it will look way neater too with concrete put through here. It will give access all the way through here. This is just an, I'll take first on the athletic. Really, a lot of it, I think y'all got a proposal request tonight for painting, we're going to change some colors on the concession stand, but we've got a progress meeting Thursday. Soon as Gaddy opens, we're going to start paving in the areas that we discussed at previous progress meetings, as soon as they can get their plan open, we're going to pave the parking lot down there, leaving out enough to where it's not going to be in the hand there until we turn the bus garage down. We're going to go ahead and get that paving done, and we'll get the surface on tennis courts, and also the surface on the track. And then, we still got a little bit of concrete to pour down there on sidewalks, but we're leaving out intentionally to provide access over to the tennis courts, so they can get their surface in. They've got to get the right temperature so this stuff adheres. We only want to do this ones, we want to do it right, so we got to get correct temperatures, but we're working with them to get those dates and make sure temperatures hold what they need, so we can get that surface on those areas. Want to show you real quick, and this is teetotaling preliminary. This is just where we've been working with architects, trying to plan out some spaces for the new home, the visitor locker rooms, and also the bus garage. And as Mr. Ford and I talked, you know, this has not been brought to you all for approval yet, this, this kind of shows you that it's in process. We're working with Sheriff Carter Barnhart to try to plan out, we've met with Coach French, kind of looking at what spaces he needs, and also the folks at the bus garage, Mr. Eric, we've looked at all those, and trying to plan out these spaces, so.
We'll, we'll come to you all with the schematic design, and we're kind of to that good point, for you all to look at that.
I would know a little differently.
This is the home locker room, and we're just, we're looking at, this would be the front of the building that would face the football field. We're still actually working on placement where that will actually sit, based on grades out there at the end of the track, trying to make that work. But this would be the home, new home football locker room. This is the shower area, this is uniform storage, and laundry. This is kind of like a vestibule when you come in, it's your assistant coach's offices. These are the restrooms for the players. This is the head coach's office, he has his own restroom and shower area. This is a training room here, where the, if they're working with, whoever y'all working with, or some of that staff, but we're providing that training room. This is additional locker room space that the coach may use for maybe eighth grade and some of those younger kids. And then this is the mechanical room. And this is all the home side, that'll be on the home side of the field. So, like I said, this is just real preliminary, we're just trying to plan out spaces to make sure we're kind of seeing what this building size is going to be.
At the south end of the track, hopefully, if the grade comes out, if you look at the end of the track, right there.
This is the visitor locker rooms, that will probably be somewhere over behind the visitor boyagers on the opposite side of the field. This would actually be restrooms for the public over there from the visitor side. This would be a small concession area that could be used like for youth league games and stuff that might go on over there at the practice field. There's coach's office, storage space, here's the restrooms for the visiting team, and then also here's the locker room that would be used for the visiting team, when visitor football players are here, so.
Now, the coach's office, what coach? This is the visitor?
This could, his thought was, this could be used also for.
Eighth grade or something. Middle school.
For youth league, for middle school, other, you know, we just, we have the space, so we're trying to plan as much multi-purpose space as possible. Again, this is all still one degree, that may change to something else by next week, but just in thinking of the spaces that we've come up with at this point. And then, of course, on the front, there'll be a couple of overhead doors that would be for concession space, and this is huge. And this will be located somewhere behind the visitor boyagers. Again, we're still working out where that's going to be, based on utilities and a lot of other things back there. This is the bus garage layout. This would obviously be what would be at Russell Springs Elementary. This elevation here would be what will be proposed for the front of the building, which would be right here. 127 would be out here, so this building will face 127. So this gives the building a little bit look, you know, the thought is maybe match up some brick with Russell Springs, where it blends in pretty well up there. We went through all the space requirements that they need. This is a training room, offices, this is kind of the entry vestibule, another office space, we've got restrooms, we've got storage space here. This is also a big storage area, this is kind of where they thought they were going to store tires for buses, and then also the layout of where the maintenance part of it will be. We've got overhead doors. There are two of these spaces that they'll be able to pull all the way through the building, other spaces will be where they can come in the building and then they can back out. So, again, this is all just preliminary, kind of based off what requirements they're going to need, trying to get the spare fruits of the building where it needs to be, kind of see what this thing's going to look at before we really.
And the pit lift that we have over there currently, which is relatively new, it's not been there, I prefer to forget how long it's been there, but the company we bought it from, and the inspectors with it, it said it's still got a lot of life left in it. They're over a hundred thousand dollars, obviously, to buy a new lift, but to move that one and put it back in and have it, you know, certified, ready to go, he gave me an estimate of like twenty-five thousand dollars, so, you know, a quarter of the cost. So that was important, so the, so the structure can be designed around that pit, you know, just different things like that. We met with the mechanics and had a conference call with some of the reps of the, of the other lift to put in as well, just so all that can be incorporated in as they're planning, you know, the, the whole layout of everything, so it's some good info.
When will that be, Dirk?
Depends a little bit on design, you know, depends on what changes design-wise, and when we can get approvals and get them back to the board, and you all approve everything, I guess it'd probably be late summer, early fall.
I expect to get it done in the summer.
That can change if design doesn't change a lot. A lot of that depends on how they come up the design portion. Actually, I've got a meeting with Doug Doakes tomorrow to look at where this is going to be placed at Russell Springs Elementary in conjunction with what's there now, traffic flow, and bus.
Because we couldn't necessarily, we could orient that building a long way.
Third day, Greg.
Yeah, and leave the entrance right here on this right corner and kind of denote it with some brick, and let it run more north to south.
To what? I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, instead of like this facing 127, in my face 127 like this. How's that?
The buses is fixed.
I'm all for it.
And here is turned, and here is turned nine degrees.
It would, it would be like it was fixed by the time school started, the buses and everything.
No, that just, that will not happen.
If it started tonight, that wouldn't happen.
This is a little late, it's late by tomorrow.
Any questions?
All, everything's rolling right along, appreciate you all.
I asked Mr. Ford about that, just some of the stuff, the junk and stuff that's over there now, like the bleachers, that, I didn't know if they were going to use those as all, it's all torn apart and stuff, he thought they were going to try to use them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's rough as a cob over there.
Pardon me.
It's rough as a cob over there. And of course, that manhole over there.
Not about why it would be tied.
Okay, because to three, it's already hit it.
She said a bus hit it the other day with a cone set right on top of it.
Saturday hit it.
Saturday.
And there, and there was a big cone thing on it. It wasn't me, but it could've been me, but. Lisa hit it too, with her car. It didn't have anything on it then. Okay.
Next item is proposal request number seventeen, Russell County Schools Athletic Facility upgrades, additional painting and concession.
So this is to change the, and update the painting at the new concession stand, it's going to highlight it, the top portion of it, in a blue that would match the football stadium colors, is what this is talking about. So I recommend approval, proposal request number seventeen, for the Russell County Schools Athletic Facility upgrades. Project is presented and authorized Superintendent Ford to complete the change order. And I'll just note, yesterday at the football event, people were so complimentary on everything there.
Oh.
Yeah, they were just tickled.
They were blown away, I think most of them. I make a motion. There were so many people.
Second. Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is buses for 36th Annual Catch a Rainbow Kids Fishing Derby, June 1st, 2024.
So this is something we've been partnering with, or the board has, has agreed to partner with for a number of years, the annual Catch a Rainbow Kids Fishing Derby is June 1st, 2024. Russell County Schools has again been asked to partner by providing two buses and drivers, one regular bus and one handicapped accessible bus to aid in transporting children and adults to and from the activity site, and I gave you all a link to the, to the event. So I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education provide two buses and drivers, one regular and one handicapped accessible bus, to assist in transporting children and adults to and from the activity sites for the annual Catch a Rainbow Kids Fishing Derby at Wolf Creek National Fitch Hatchery on June 1st, 2024.
If you haven't never been, it's a treat.
It is a good day.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
And I know I speak for them, and they always want to extend their thanks for our partnership with that.
Next item on the agenda is 2024-2025 district staffing and SBDM allocation policy.
So we approved the tentative school staffing allocations back in February, they had to give out to the councils in March. This is the final school allocation. I do want to note, it was just a typo on the middle school one, on this one, it had included one guidance counselor, but it should, it should have read two, based on the, the first one, where we're adding that additional guidance counselor position. So I recommend the approval of the final staffing formula, SBDM allocations, and the staffing allocation policy for the 24-25 school year, and the formula, formula becomes part of the minutes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Sorry. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is vision itinerant service contract.
So this is again a very familiar one that you all see year to year. We do not employ a full-time teacher for the visually impaired, but we, Ms. Laura provides services for students here and, and other school districts, so this is her contract again for the 24-25 school year. I recommend approval of the vision itinerant service contract that's been approved by the board attorney. She does a great job for our students.
Make a motion. I mean, do we have visually impaired kids?
Ms. Joy, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, no. It's, it's very few, yeah, we have very few right now.
Second. Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Uh, Brandon.
Mr. Selby, second, sorry. Okay. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Over our trip. We're fast now.
Next item is out of state and/or overnight trips.
Okay, the following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state and overnight trips, April 16th through the 17th, Russell County FFA to the state horsemanship contest at Murray State, May 11, 2024, the NGLTC for Kings Island in Ohio, June 24th through the 30th, TSA National Conference in Orlando, Florida, and congratulations to the TSA, Ms. Ackerman, her club, there they had outstanding competition.
They blew it away, Sarah.
Away the Saturday.
That is great.
Yeah, did really, really well. And June 27th to July 1st, the Educated Rising National Conference in Washington, DC. Conference in Washington, DC. I recommend approval of the out-of-state or overnight trips as presented.
Motion?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Okay.
Second?
Yes.
Mr. Murray, meet you.
Mr. Beal.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
So when do they have another home getting with it?
They don't have one this year.
All right.
Next item is declare surplus, declare surplus for school nutrition high-up commercial steamer.
Okay, so our school nutrition program has a Henny Penny. Messed that up. That's unlocked the old, the old storybook. Combi Master Steamer, that's no longer needed, and there's a picture that was attached for your review.
Yeah.
For the Russell County Board of Education policy, the superintendent should advise the board when certain properties are no longer needed for public school purposes. You're all familiar with this. Receiving the report, you all can declare the items eligible for surplus. So the model there, it does need a new, it's not currently used, doesn't currently work. It needs a new control board. So I recommend the Russell County Board of Education declare the Henny Penny Combi Master Steamer as surplus property and authorize Superintendent Ford and his designated to advertise for seal bids with the option to reject any and all bids.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
You're gonna beat me.
Yeah, again.
Mr. Murray?
She's dragging it. Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
There's artworks for me.
Touch of this?
Next item is personnel reports.
Macy Guster, Jameson Elementary School teacher, resigned effective June 30, 2024. Brooke Pierce, Russell County High School, transferred to the bookkeeper, from bookkeeper to the guidance counselor secretary. Stephen French, of course, hired as varsity head football coach. Courtney Polston, Russell County High School, hired cashier cook. Gregory Hammond, resigned assistant football coach effective March 20. Felicia Garrison transferred from to a P5 teacher effective July 1, 2024. Ashley Lawless, Russell County High School, resigned teacher assistant effective March 20. And Sarah Huff, district, resigned assistant to the Family Resource Center effective March 22, 2024.
Next item, public comments.
Oh, yeah.
Not a comment, I have a question. I missed the very first teacher you said that was resigning. What was the name?
Macy Johnson. Macy Guster.
Was it? Yes.
Rodney Johnson.
Yes.
Don't stay home with the rain.
Other than that, my comment is it's nice weather outside.
We talked about that on the way in, didn't we, Mr.?